Oh, you're not gonna go get plants.
It's a pot fly.
That's all right.
Oh, an air by third.
No problem. See when I get there, bye. So I was rather fortuitous. She called just before we went into order.
Well, I was waiting for you.
She's having her shoulder replaced tomorrow morning. Or not, I guess. She has like 10 times worse than a torn cuff, bro.
All right.
I've been there. Are we streaming? Good evening. This is the Bath Charter Township Board Regular Meeting for tonight. We're just had off a special meeting, so sorry for the delay. Welcome. It's Monday, May 19th, 2025. We'll start with the call to order.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Challander, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Kotke?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we didn't lose anybody in the transition.
Lucky.
Item two of the agenda is civic reflection. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence, so please stand and join if you are able and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now a moment of silence. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If you're in the audience, there should be extra copies on the lectern so you can follow along with where we are. I didn't hear any changes prior to the meeting. Does anybody have anything they want to alter? Doesn't look like it. Does someone wanna move approval of that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an agenda. Any conflicts of interest we need to disclose this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll go to item five, which is public statement. This is limited to three minutes only for items that are on the agenda tonight. There's a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for an additional three minutes where you can talk about any topic under the sun that you'd like to. But for this one, we're sticking to agenda item topics. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to items from county, state, federal, and other agencies. I don't see any of those agencies. Were we expecting anybody?
We were not.
Great. That moves us to the consent agenda of which there is nothing, or in which. That brings us to item eight, approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting from May 5th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for May 5th Regular Trustee Meeting.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2025, as presented. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the Board of Trustees' meeting of May 5th, 2025, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you get what you're looking for? Okay.
Thank you.
The drawer hit me, so.
I know.
We need a new dais. We need a new dais. That brings us to item nine, which is approval of the vouchers. There are questions, thoughts about the vouchers, or a motion to move them forward?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second for the vouchers. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask my friend, the clerk, to do a roll call vote.
Mr. Kotke?
Here. Oh, yes.
Yes. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion carried as well. Item 10 is the treasures report. We don't have a treasures report until July. Item 11 is committee appointments. We do have a committee appointment tonight, per request of trustee Rosecrans. Mr. Reich has turned in his reappointment form for the road committee, and I am asking you to approve him for the road committee with a term ending December 31st, 2027.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is this a reappointment or an appointment?
Reappointment.
I think it's a reappointment.
Reappointment. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Was that Ray with the second? Thank you, Ray.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I just wanna say John spent a real benefit on there, so.
Great. All right, well, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the appointment of John Reich to the road committee with a term ending December 31st, 2027, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have no township committee reports tonight. Item 13 is unfinished business. We have some items under introduction and discussion under A. Small A is Bath Fest budget funding request. And we have the Chair of the Recreation Advisory Committee here, Mr. Montre, and just a reminder, this is an item for introduction discussion. The intent is not to vote on this tonight. Welcome.
Hello. Sandra is here with me as well, another committee member. So she has been cleaning up Gary Lane, so her voice is a little hoarse yelling at people, did you move their stuff? From the allergies and all the sawdust, so. All right, so, well, thanks. We've been busy at work at the committee since we last met here. You should have a simple budget in front of you. We're happy to answer some questions about it if you have questions. There are notes that we have sort of internally that we've been working from that break down those numbers a little more. Those of you who try to print Excel files know that those don't always print very cleanly, so we removed the notes since it's our internal discussion. Cheryl's even, so. But if you do have any questions specifically about whether, you know, the revenue or the costs for any of the line items are there. So as you can see, we are keeping it small, like we said we would for this first year. We're under $10,000, just under $10,000 is a estimated budget. I think it's important to say we haven't done this before in this way, and so it is an estimate with some assumptions that are built into it about potential for sponsorships, the potential for number of cornhole entries, those types of things. So if there's any question about those, I can take those now. If there's any line item questions.
What's the $950 cost for the car show first?
Yep, so we have four trophies, so we're budgeting trophies at around $50 each. So we have oldest car, best in show, best truck, best car. And then we were going back and forth about maybe changing one to, one of them to something else. So it's four trophies and some dash plaques, so pretty popular at car shows. If you haven't been, you know, it's the little dash box that everyone gets, so. Those, and then we're also gonna have a DJ and some music around there.
And the entrance don't have to pay anything to get their car?
No.
I thought that would've been a good way to get some revenue there. And also, the printing services, what is that so high for? That seems like your single highest, well, other than bounce house.
So printing services would include like programs, printing, printing for, as part of the sponsorship packages, they are. So there will be some offset there, but if some of those, the sponsorship packages include like, depending on what level they choose, maybe yard sign or five yard signs, or if they sponsor one of the larger activities, it's a three by eight or three by six banner. So some of those types of costs that go along with those.
The reason I ask is because for the past 10 years, I've been a part of the Summer Solstice Festival that Friends of Park Lake puts on, and you have a very, very similar budget here. So that was one of my reasons. We had to, we funded it all ourselves and came up in the hole every year, but it was fun and it brought in, you know, not an insignificant amount of people, and we've always had a good report from the community. So I applaud you guys for, because it's not easy.
Well, it's something people have been asking for, as you all know for quite a while.
Is the 5K revenue just entry fees?
5K? Uh, yes. So it's assumed, so we got a budget.
106 runners or something like that?
It's about 100 runners.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and then there's some, the Running Foundation is who James has partnered with to help do all the coordination in that, so there's some fees that go along with them, printing of shirts for participants, some awards, and then the kind of snacks and little bananas and mini water bottles at the end are the costs that go along with that.
Did the Running Foundation think a hundred was like a reasonable amount of entrance?
That's what, yeah, so those were all, yeah, that's what based on, yeah. And it seems like what happens with them, at least 5Ks, is they kinda, you know, they promote them, they go onto their site, and there's, seems like at least there's enough people that they kinda hit them all up.
Okay.
So.
Is the intention that this is going to take place in the park again?
The activities?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the 5K, we're looking at the cross-country course, so.
Right, right.
They go run around the park. Yeah, so like bounce houses, part of the bounce houses are some dunk tank as well, and a nine-hole putt-putt golf course, and then one dunk, one obstacle course inflatable, and then one sort of traditional bounce house. So that sounds like that can fit, from talking with a company in Perry that does none of the, our quotes from and info, that can fit sort of in that back corner between the church and kind of Main Street back. And then vendors would be more in the area where the farmer's market is now.
I noticed.
And then tub races would be where they've always been. Food, the intention is food trucks would be in the circle drive of the middle school. We have a request into the superintendent, email, and a couple phone calls to try to make, you know, get clearance and all of that. And then the car show would take place in the back of the elementary school. So the food trucks would, you know, so everything would sort of be in that space there.
And I heard our chief was gonna volunteer to be in the dunk tank.
I heard that just now.
Isn't that cool? It's so, it's for two hours and.
Man, the revenue we're gonna get.
It's gonna be amazing.
Better take that armor off, because you'll sink right to the bottom.
We just told them you can choose to be in the cold or clean water. You can't fit both warm and clean.
Well, maybe we can get the fire department to drain it and re-pot it.
We're gonna promote Park Lake, so it's gonna be.
We're gonna have ice cubes in it?
Clean Park Lake water.
Depends on who's going in, yeah.
Man, you're not getting any slack.
Kinda starting right now.
Days into this job and. I assume you all have booked the park for those dates?
Well, we have, yes.
Okay.
Pretty sure it's on the calendar.
We've been talking with, I talked to Sue Gerardi the other day. That's usually the same weekend that they do their back-to-school backpack things. And so she and I are gonna connect and see like, hey, do we just do that as part of the larger event? Do we find another time? And so she and I are talking, but haven't gotten together yet to iron that out.
Just so you know, the football parents are putting on a golf outing that Friday also.
Okay.
Don't know where it's at.
Okay.
I was just told that it's happening.
And most of our stuff, you know, Friday night is the plan, at least for now, is it's sort of like a setup. Do the check, people can come and do some test runs with their tubs, pick up some bibs for the race the next day. So Friday night is kind of like a, yeah.
I did notice on the announcement I saw for the 5K that it said high school parking lot, but the cross-country course starts at the middle school unless you're gonna change it?
So I think we'll do the same thing, but the plan was to try to make it so that there was parking, and so to have them park at the high school and then have like a walk. Yeah, exactly, that was the, that's the plan.
Is the 5K on Saturday?
It is, at 9:00.
Where is the parade and when is that?
So the parade is 10:00 on Saturday.
And where are you having them line up at?
Uh, they are gonna line up in the Four Corners lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you've got that approved by Kessler's and all that?
Yep, I talked to Kami two weeks ago.
Okay.
And she gave us the approval. I'm gonna check in with the businesses just to kind of, out of respect, give them the heads up that we're lining everybody up, but closer to the daycare, kind of in front of that area, so it's not blocking the businesses that will be open that weekend, or that morning.
Okay. I mean, we always lined up in the middle school parking lot, but then you just said that you have the food trucks going there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I mean, we always had our food trucks right in the park where the other vendors were, so.
Yeah, we thought with the number of trucks that hopefully we're getting five to six that they could line up and then kind of be a walk to the car show, walk to the food, walk across to the parking kind of thing.
The bounce houses, how many of them have you requested?
Uh, so one large, one just like a standard castle bounce house, and then there's a 35-foot obstacle course one.
Because the reason I ask is for Friends of Park Lake, I've been renting one every year for like the last 10 years. Do we get one from Gilbert's Hardware right there in Dewitt? And it's only like, I think it was like 150 bucks. So you may wanna look into that and save a little money. I would, I just looked at that cost and I said, well, maybe they're having five or 10, I don't know.
Yeah, so that includes the dunk tank and the nine holes.
Oh, okay, well, that's different.
So that's all one company that does it, and then they come out. It also includes set up and teardown, since we don't have a lock facility. They'll tear it down, and they'll set it up Saturday morning, tear it down Saturday night, bring it back out early Sunday morning, and then tear it down.
I tell you what, that'll be really good if you have somebody else set it up and tear it down, because every year it was like 100 degrees there in Whistwasser Park, and that is no fun.
Yeah, and they were saying too that like, you know, they're more, the reason that they do the teardown is said, yeah, they can get some damage potentially. They're not that concerned about it. It's more a liability of if it's up, no one's around, or even if it's down, someone comes at 2:00 in the morning, blows it up, gets in there, starts jumping, something happens, then, you know, broken arm or whatever, that then, so that was their suggestion to tear it down like that.
Thank you.
I'll just let you know, we had volunteers that we, well, they weren't volunteers. We paid them to be in the park overnight just so people could leave their craft booths and everything set up, so we didn't have to worry about that.
Yeah, there was a suggestion of that, that you would, yeah.
Yeah, I spoke to the chief last week, and that's what they suggested, was to have a couple volunteers to.
Just sit in the park.
Work overnight and not on the park overnight. So we have that on our list to add for the volunteers.
And there'll probably be seniors that wanna get their service hours in before school starts.
Yep, we have a senior also.
Yeah, I have a senior also that.
We all will.
Yeah, but yeah, so it's like, all right, I know you haven't got your hour, then you haven't got your service hour.
How's the Wi-Fi in the park? That's.
That's the ultimate question.
Have you all talked about, there's a chance that the road construction would be at the same time, right? Or at the tail end of the construction?
We have been coordinating as much as we can to ensure all elections and events of the township are going off without a hitch. So as we move towards that, we will make sure that our partners involve the most conversations with the Bath Fest team to ensure that they have a smooth sailing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sure you've already thought about this, but if you're gonna have folks walking across that road, having some sort of crossing guard or something to flag traffic, I think would be helpful.
Yeah. We have a long list of volunteer opportunities.
Great.
Being added to daily.
Ray also needs his community service hours. For a different reason.
Not littering in the park.
That's right. That's why he wants the chief in the dunk tank. So what is your ask of us then? I imagine you want us to move to some sort of action next meeting?
Yeah, so is there a meeting this month still? It's just moved because of Memorial Day?
No, June 2nd is our next one.
June 2nd is the next one, okay. So I think the ask to start with would be, you know, we're budgeting around $10,000. We don't, we haven't done this before. And I think the ask would be for an investment in the community here this first year of $10,000 for us to be able to get things in place. Some of the decisions we made, like not charging for the bounce houses, we went back and forth pretty heavily. That was probably our longest discussion that we've had, you know, of how do we sell tickets? How much do they cost? What do we do? How do we monitor that? And I think what we decided is that, since this is an activity that we are, people in the community have been asking for, not charging for something like that is more important to us as the Recreation Advisory Committee than it is to be able to offer opportunities regardless of family income as opposed to generating revenue.
Well, and donation, we had, that was, I thought that was a great idea to have donation bucket, so you can come, if you have money, you can put it in there. If you don't have money, you can come as a service for the community. And possibilities are, we'll make more money with that system.
With the caveat, yeah, with the caveat that we were mostly interested in talking, and we haven't yet, with Taylor about a QR code, so that.
Right.
The other decision around not charging was, one of the things we had talked about was trying to not burden township employees. None of us can collect money. We would have to have a township employee there collecting money for ticket sales and handling money. And so part of what we also talked about was not having to have a township committee person there collecting that money. And so I think that if we could think about it, that we could post not just by bounce houses or not just by car show or that, but throughout the entire area, some QR codes where someone, people can make electronic donations to.
And is that how you're gonna do the silent auction also?
We have to talk about that more, so I think.
Okay, pay through the QR code or something for the silent auction?
Yeah, through the QR code, or the way we were talking about doing the cornhole is that it's a voucher that like they, so first, in second place, get cash winnings that, but we're not gonna give them cash, we're gonna give them a voucher that would be brought up to the township to be turned in. So maybe a similar way with the silent auction where they, you know, get, you got this prize, this prize goes, this amount, this prize goes up to the township, and then you come up with your voucher, and a list is here to say like, you know, this person got this item for this amount of money. And then they would come up and pick it up up here.
As township employees, can we still win cornhole?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so into cornhole. Okay, we either need to be on a team or we need to be rival. She's a sleeper, you gotta watch her. I have one last question, just an administrative question. Do you have a treasurer that's keeping track of all your funds and spending and budget and all of that?
So right now, we're working, well.
Are both of you just doing it?
Most of us, mostly do, I do, I guess.
Well, the reason I ask is if, you know, hey, what if you get a sponsor that comes up and gives you a check for $5,000? Is it going to be addressed to Bath Charter Township or?
Oh, yeah, that's all, yes. And we don't handle, like, if someone hands us a check, we talked very early on with Karen and Taylor about this, that we don't handle anything like that. They can bring it up here, they can mail it in to the township.
Or the QR codes.
Or, yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, but yeah, so we are not handling any type of money at all.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Under no circumstances.
I didn't know treasurer if this is, you know, if indeed it's.
We've already dealt with it.
Have we? How come I haven't heard about it then?
Because you're the treasurer.
You got a line item there? Well, good.
We've already dealt with it.
Let us know.
We already know what we're doing out here.
No, because this is part of the township now, they don't need a treasurer, right? Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I, that's why I was wondering. I mean, have, maybe I wasn't here when we took this all in. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a bath party. Maybe you were not.
Maybe he wasn't. He might have not been on the board still.
Yeah, Jack was here.
I think it was still Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Jack, yeah. He didn't bring, he didn't fill me in on that, but he did on a lot of other things. Thank you. So I, what I understand you're saying is you're looking for like seed funding, but that you may not intend for us to invest every year.
I think that's, yes, I think, I mean, if we look at this, it's most, I think the intention is that post this year, it would be a mostly revenue-neutral activity.
Yeah, push.
You know, and that we would think, work with sponsorships and those types of things. But there's things like now, since it's the first year where we need to put a deposit down to say, to hold the bounce houses, but we don't have any money currently in the account to do that, or we have the donation, the first sponsorship that came in.
Yep.
Yeah, so, but, you know, so we need to like order trophies, we need to get t-shirts printed, those types of things, but we don't have that. But I think in future years, then, the intention would be that it would be revenue-neutral and/or if we decide down the road, I think, because it's not too big right now, but if we decide down the road at some point to do rides or those types of things, that that would clearly start to involve ticket sales or, you know, that's a step up that, and we're not intending that for next year, I don't think.
I think you should call Kohler, Kohler, and have them donate bathtubs.
Yeah.
They're the only American-made bathtub in America.
Oh, really?
In the whole country? Yeah, in the whole country. Kohler, Wisconsin, yep. All right, any other questions? So we'll expect this to be back on the agenda in.
June 2nd.
Two weeks, is it like three weeks?
Three weeks, and we have an extra, an extra day on.
June 2nd.
There's an extra week in there, I think.
Do we have an extra?
I don't know.
Yes, just two weeks.
We have, so the board is aware.
There's three paydays at my office in May, so. Don't make Karen talk.
We have revenue and expenditure lines that were created with the help of the treasurer and the accountant so that everything that's coming in and going out is being done so in an auditable way. So it's all being handled very well with township policies and procedures, so we appreciate that.
And is that a special revenue fund?
It is.
We did Bath Fest.
We did.
Named it Bath Fest.
So it could, yes.
It's got its own fund.
It's not in the rec department?
No.
No, so it could, so it could retain any money that it has and carry over for future years.
That's great.
Correct.
Well, thank you for you all and your committee and hard work, and we will, we'll talk to you again in two weeks.
Two, three?
Three.
Three weeks.
Is it the 3rd?
June 2nd.
Monday, June 2nd.
He has a really hard time.
We have an extra week.
I said three and you guys all yelled at me two weeks.
No, I think it's just two weeks.
You just said two weeks, and he said three.
19 plus 7 is 26, and then plus 7 more is.
She's a teacher, she just did the math. It's two weeks.
I'm just gonna say June 2nd.
Yeah.
She was educated.
Yeah, no matter how many weeks away it is, we'll see you in June 2nd.
And if any of you have any questions or anything like that prior, you know, as you're going through things or as you're, you're talking this, you know, in the next, somewhere between two and three weeks.
June 2nd.
Sometimes you can go now with June 2nd, just like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That brings us to unfinished business, large A items for introduction discussion, small B Eaton area ambulance contract update from our superintendent.
Was it two weeks or three weeks?
Two.
It is two, I was looking.
Okay.
It's a week and a half.
June 2nd, I'm just gonna say June 2nd. This will also come back to you on June 2nd. The Eaton area ambulance contract has been a topic that has been moving around this township and moving around legal counsel. We appreciate them very much, very quickly. It has almost been moving too quickly, so Dan Coste and I, the city manager of Dewitt, and I finally agreed to pull it from our agenda because it is currently, the contract is at U of M for their review, for their corporate review.
Oh, wow.
Yes, that's good news. And so what we envisioned happening was that our legal counsel had recommended some changes and had worked with Dewitt City to make some changes. And what was going to happen is U of M was going to also recommend some changes, so what we decided to do was pull it from our agenda, pull it from review, and wait for U of M to come back with their changes, at which time we would approach them with our changes, so that when it came to the three boards of the municipalities, it would be in a final and concrete state for you. I envisioned a very messy review process had we continued along with what we were doing prior. And I do appreciate this board's willingness to review and be quick in one meeting. I can assure you that, that all three municipalities have lawyers involved, obviously U of M has lawyers involved, but we, we felt it best to slow it down just a little bit, to have the best product for our communities as possible, and the best service which we truly believe is going to occur. So you will have this most likely before you at June 2nd for action. I have the interim fire chief, Ben Zeeb, has taken a look at it, as well as the fire chiefs of the other municipalities. And what I can assure you will be occurring in the next couple of days is we will be letting Christine Cullum at Central Dispatch know that Mercy is no longer, no longer serving us, and that our preference is for them to work with Eaton area ambulance to move those calls as of, I think it is May 22nd. Mercy will no longer be responding to 911 calls, and Eaton area will do that out of mutual aid until there's a formal agreement in place. So I am very happy with what is transpiring for our communities, and I'm very pleased with the professionalism and the, and the speed with which everyone is willing to move to get this done for all of the participating communities.
A few clarifications. U of M is involved because of Sparrow?
Sparrow, correct. They purchased Sparrow and are now known as U of M Healthcare, so that is correct, that is because of Sparrow.
And during this entire period, we will have some sort of coverage. We will not ever have no coverage in the township.
We will, we will, you currently are seeing Mercy, it's my understanding that Mercy is not covering currently, and that you are seeing Clinton area ambulances are, they call it staging around our communities of Dewitt, Bath and Bath Township, or Dewitt, City of Dewitt and Bath Township, so they can be mutually located to respond to anything in any of our communities. So Clinton area is currently responding, and as of, in a couple of days, possibly two or three Eaton area will be responding as well.
And Mercy, they've ceased operations?
It is my understanding that their 911 operations have ceased in Lansing. They are doing transport, medical transports is all that they're doing at this time.
But in other communities, they're still doing the 911? Like Berry?
They do have specific agreements in other communities such as Berry, where I believe those are still in effect unless, I have not been informed of what's occurring, but it is my understanding that they are. It's the Lansing area.
And just to clarify, you, you mentioned Jan Coste. She's with Dewitt City or?
Dan, D-A-N, Dan.
Dan Coste.
Dan Coste, yes. Yes, he's the city manager of Dewitt.
Dewitt, okay.
Yeah.
So Karen's counterpart.
Yeah, city, well, I always get, you know, Dewitt Township, Dewitt City.
Amanda McClanican is the manager in Dewitt Township.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But our firefighter, or fire chiefs have been working very well on this. I can tell you, Central Dispatch has been working really well to get this up and running, so everybody is really pulling their weight to make this happen for all of us in a very short period of time.
Very important.
It is, and I will say good things about Clinton area as well, even though they were not chosen as our provider, they are still making sure this community is taken care of.
Are they nonprofit also?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
They're a government entity, aren't they?
Clinton area, yeah, nonprofit, but yes, Clinton area. I don't know their technical classification.
I mean, what's, what's their parity to Eaton? The tentative successor to Mercy for us, is what my brain was asking.
Well, what I understood is Eaton's not government, but it is nonprofit.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, seems how they voted down their municipal village again.
Well, they're helping us, so.
Thank you.
But they're separate though, from their government. Eaton, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
That's right, yeah.
Because of Sparrow.
Correct.
So I guess, I guess Clinton wouldn't be called a nonprofit then?
I don't know how they're, how they're, how they have filed or what their status is.
I think they're an authority.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Which is a governmental unit.
If you're getting, you know, getting funding from the county, then you're certainly not a nonprofit. But you're not a for-profit either, you're a municipal service.
I don't know that they're getting money from the county.
They're not getting money from the county. There's, there's no village that supports ambulance in this, no, in this county. That is actually something when the, the rest of us began asking if we could move to Clinton area, that was something we asked the county administrator, was if there would be a village, if a village could be involved in supporting this, if the entire county of Clinton was on Clinton area ambulance, that was something, and it seemed to be something they were not interested in entertaining at that time.
Interesting, yeah.
Well, thank you for shepherding us through this fast-changing process.
A lot of moving pieces, but I, I do think the end product will be one that we can be proud of for our community.
It's nice to partner with our friends in Dewitt to make this happen.
There's a lot of room for us to do more of that, and we are looking for those opportunities.
Great. Any other questions? This will be brought back June 2nd as well.
Correct.
All right. We'll move into unfinished business items for action. Contract for strategic planning facilitation. So as you saw in your packet, we've landed on Larry Merrill, who's the former executive director of Michigan Township Association. He just led, I thought, a really informative session with us about community engagement as part of the strategic planning process. If you recall, we had set aside two buckets of money for both the strategic plan and the sort of committee assessment, and that work has merged into one bucket of work that Larry will help us with. So, we're actually under budget then. When you combine those two budgets that were approved, the requested price in here is about $7,000, I think, under budget. Is that fair to say, Karen?
I think it is, yes.
So we're also saving some money, and we've got some continuity and alignment, which is great. I think those things are all very, very positive. So what I'm asking for you, us, tonight is to approve the contract that he technically started working on an hour ago.
And what is the, what is the sum? We did read it, but it just, for the public's.
Thirteen.
Something, thirteen, seven, eighty or?
Six sixty.
Thirteen, six, six, zero?
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Thank you, Ray.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second as our other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kottke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. One of the things I discussed with Larry is that the, the act of us doing this together and having the conversations is actually part of the outcome, that we work together, that we think together, that we hear each other and build trust between each other and an understanding of where we are on what we want for the community. That in itself is one of the outcomes, so I'm looking forward to having those discussions with you all.
Same here. It, you know, to, to the uninformed and to the casual person in Bath Township, it may seem nebulous, you know, but I think it's very, very important for our future, our responsible future.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you did not catch that first meeting, you can watch it streaming on our YouTube channel, but there will be opportunities for the public to be engaged in the process, and you will hear about those, and there'll be opportunities for our staff to be engaged and our committees to be engaged. So this is sort of a welcome and encompassing process. All right, that brings us to items for action, fire department application for Homeland Security Grant Program.
Mr. Douglas is not here. He is tonight submitting something to his new planning commission up in St. John's, so I told him I would allow his, his absence.
Are you gonna talk about it then?
I can, if you would like me to, but.
I definitely can't talk about it, so somebody should.
I, I thought we covered this already.
We did cover it already.
It's a grant for, yeah.
It's correct, it is a grant.
This is just what he introduced to us last time.
Correct.
Great. And we're sure DHS is still giving grants out?
It's on my understanding that, yeah, that is a grant.
Maybe the only department that's giving grants out?
Yeah.
All right.
That I can't guarantee, but we can try.
Yeah, well, we should get the money, it's still available.
It'll change by tomorrow.
Any questions or clarifications?
There's no action for us to take on this?
No, there is.
The approval of the.
Yeah, the reaction.
Yeah, there is, good.
Authorizes us to apply for the grant.
Oh, 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 and I thought we already did that too. So I, if there's a motion to be made, I'll make that motion for them to apply for the Homeland Security Grant Program.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application request from our team in a second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is this roll call or voice?
Um, I have a roll call.
That's what I had too.
Okay.
So since we both had it, let's do that.
Okay, so, but it is to authorize Assistant Chief Douglas to apply for the grant, is that how we're wording it?
Correct.
Approving the grant application.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Butler Chaloner, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kottke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
And just a reminder to our board members that this is part of a process that's laid out in policy at the township, that the grant applications go through us before they turn into an application. But because of oftentimes the speed in which the actual application needs to be pulled together and submitted, we sort of do the pre-application approval so that our staff can move quickly. And if you would like to see that policy, Karen can share it with you. That came out of the finance committee 12, 15 years ago.
Correct.
And that's how we've been operating, so thank you for that. All right, that brings us to item 14, new business, large A items for introduction discussion, small A MERS defined benefit plan adoption agreement to separate employees in an existing division, 01, union.
Correct, thank you.
Employees.
First step. I know that there has not been education to date about the defined benefit plan that we currently have or anything that we might be moving to, but one of the first initial steps that we need to take as a township is to, since our MERS plan was formulated many years ago, I, I hesitate to even think if it was in the 70s or the 80s, we were combined as one large group of union employees. And in order to effectuate changes on the MERS plans, we need to separate the union from the non-union employees here at the township, so that we can begin to make some of those changes that the finance committee will be recommending to this board, and the board will be educating themselves on and potentially adapting as we move forward into the next coming months. So the, what you have in front of you today, and, and in our hurry to put this in the board packet, does need us to back up a little bit for the next meeting on June 2nd and to select some of the selections that you see on each page of the document, and we will do that. But essentially, this means that you are separating, we have two unions here at the township. You have a road patrol union in the police department, and you have a supervisory union here in the police department, and all other full-time employees are non-union. What you are effectively doing is separating those non-union employees from the union employees, so that you can make changes to them. The union employees still have the opportunity to negotiate with legal counsel and I and the board of trustees, as we will do in the coming months, for what plan that they will be under as we move forward. But the non-union employees do not have that opportunity and will be put into a, a plan that this finance committee has developed and this board will implement over the next couple of months. So if I can anyway answer any questions for you, please let me know, but this is for simplicity's sake, this is just the separation of union versus non-union employees.
So to clarify, there's no change in benefits or plan at this point?
Correct.
We're just putting the two groups in two places?
Correct, we are just separating them apart.
To allow us to move faster.
They will still be in the same plan, as you can see at the top, it'll say, it says defined benefit plan. That is the same plan that everybody is in currently at this moment, it is just to separate those union and non-union employees.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yeah?
Have the non-union employees been counseled on this?
They are having an all-employee meeting coming up here with me and with legal counsel and the consultants that have helped us do this, develop this plan that will be coming to you. So yes, they will have an opportunity to be counseled on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really, they're gonna get the bigger plan at their meeting, not just this piece of it?
Correct.
Other questions? All right, well, we'll look forward to that coming forward.
Actually, I have this, oh, it is an item for introduction and discussion, my apologies. We will make the necessary selections in this document for you at your next meeting, and we can discuss any questions that you have at that time.
And we're still on the timeline to do that, right?
Correct, we are.
We don't do that tonight, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
June 2nd.
Next up is the Community Enhancement Grant Funding Request under the MEDC's Revitalization and Placemaking, or RAP, program, which is new business A-B.
Correct. This is fantastic news, and I must tell you that Miles, our planner, Beth Bakie, our assessor, and our interns in the planning department worked very hard to make this come to fruition. It was, there was a big hurry-up-and-wait game. They applied for this back in January. They continued to be contacted about it, asked questions about it, asked to refine it here and there, and they stayed steadfast, and we were given the notice, I think on May, I think it was the 7th, that we had been awarded this grant for $250,000. This will go a long way to help the work that we're doing in the Webster Road corridor with street lighting and signage, and perhaps, I think, some benches as well. And we were, I think what finally happened is we were combined into a much larger grant in the area through the Lansing Economic Area Partnership, and all of those grants that were part of that were awarded, including ours, for $250,000. So, great news for Bath, great news for our team that worked on this, and although the grant agreement is not ready yet, as soon as we receive that, that will come here, because part of that process that you, in authorizing to apply for grants, is that you will also accept those grants and authorize those agreements, so that we can in turn take the money and do the things that we promised we would do. So that will be back to you for consideration in the future.
This is great.
This is fantastic.
Congrats to you and the staff and for finding these opportunities, and it seems to be that we're more competitive lately for these things, which is just great news.
Yeah, Miles worked, Miles and Beth worked very hard on this, and it's, it's a great win for this, this township.
That's great.
Yeah.
Other questions? So we'll see this on an agenda when we get the paperwork from LEAP?
Correct.
That brings us to items for action, item 14, new business, big B items for action, and where Karen giveth, Karen taketh away. So we have some emergency building repairs. We have our interim DPW director Baird here to talk to us about that, and note, this is on items for action because of the emergent need.
Oh, no.
Welcome to your first appearance before the board in your new role.
Thank you.
Could you tell the board maybe how long you've been with us and, and what roles you've held, and where you're at today?
I've been with the department for 18 years now, and in labor, last year became foreman, and the chair became interim director.
I'm gonna hope, I'm gonna hope this works. Yeah, please.
I bet if we had a new dais, it would work.
I bet it would.
I concur with that.
That would be great, wouldn't it?
Is it gonna be like the Hollywood Squares?
Well, I think that'd be great. Are you center square?
I am. Now and always.
I don't think you're connected, Karen.
I don't know why. Let me just see if I can go grab Beth.
It looks like the wifi is off on the TV.
Oh.
Oh, Beth left.
Did you, do you, are you hardwired to it, Karen?
No.
I was gonna say, I thought one of those little dongles would-
I bet Taylor is weighing in with some, um, advice. You have to hit the input button on the remote in the corner.
In the corner.
Oh, way up at the top, right in that corner.
That's where you hand out papers.
It looks like you need to renew the wifi connection.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's the-
See, if you had an Apple, you wouldn't have that problem.
Listen, right.
We have that conversation in my office almost on a daily basis.
Yeah.
You have to hit the input button on the remote in the corner.
She just-
Oh, did I do it?
Taylor texted me. In the corner of the remote?
Oh, no, it's leaving.
Yeah.
Just one second, I'm gonna call her. She can yell at me easier.
True.
Hi, will you help me please?
Um, do you have the H-G-M-I button here in there?
I have the little button, the black button box plugged into my computer.
I don't think that's working right now, so I think you need to do the H-G-M-I.
Wonder why that screen's not moving too. So she is gonna hardwire it.
I would like to say, well, Karen is doing this, that we actually had a bird in the building today and we don't know how it got here. And it, we're, we wonder if it's because of this issue in the back corner.
Is it brown?
What?
The bird.
It was a big black bird.
Yep.
Oh, that's mine.
Is there actually a hole all the way through?
That would be a, that would be a starving-
This is why it needs to be repaired.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a harbinger of doom.
He was on the TV screen and he was not switching from click share-
Great.
Thing over there.
Yeah, it was right on your microphone, Kate.
We stuff a towel in the hole or something.
We, we got it out through the door. DPW worked really hard today getting it hammered out. It was out here in the line, it hit the window out here.
Oh, my goodness.
You know what I find really working here-
It's not switching from click share to-
I understand the video might have picked that up.
Oh, I'm sure the video-
Did, did it bring bird flu with it?
Oh, jeez.
Taylor probably has it on video.
When we had that problem back in my old building, we just, we gave everybody, um, tennis rackets.
We'll do, we'll do a deal with that.
Cool.
It worked!
We're gonna get voted off for Parkland advisory board for that.
We just shut the doors and it went off the door.
It just worked for Miles, but it's not gonna work for us, so what I'm gonna do is, um, play Vanna White to Cody's, um, description of what is on the screen, so.
Okay.
Um, so what you have, um, the memo you have in front of you tonight is, um, separated into two issues. We have a township issue, um, in the back, uh, part of the office, which is, um, nearest to, uh, outside here in this corridor that we have. Um, it's the part of the township that was added on when they added on the police department, uh, back in the nineteen eighties. Um, the second issue that we have tonight is down the hill at the fire station, which was built in two thousand, um, which is essentially twenty-five years old now, but, um, still not an old building, to say the least. So what Cody has done is taken pictures of the damage that is inside the building so that you can understand what is happening and why we need this money to, um, fix, uh, what is occurring and most likely will be back to you, um, because as you read in the memo, there's also a leak in the fire, uh, department, uh, roof. And we will be back, because we don't have numbers on that yet, but we will be back to you for additional funds to try to, um, stop the water from coming in and, uh, making additional damage to the buildings. So, would you like to start with the township or with?
We'll start with township.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, so if you wanna talk about this one, I will.
First picture here is a base of board that we found this year and rotted off. And gutters are hooked up to it, gutters fall down on us, so we put some two-by-fours into it, at least hold the gutters up right now. But the water is running down into there and rotting out the boards.
That's the, see, that's the roof on the outside.
And then that's the roof shows, not much of a slant to it, pretty close to a flat roof, shows the water pooling up on it, which is not allowing for proper drainage on there.
And this is which building?
This is the building here.
Oh, the one in the back, okay, okay.
It's right above you.
What, you're thinking about what new roof on, is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
A new roof on the flat part of the roof.
On the, yeah, that part right there, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be treated, what they're, wanna put on is treated like a flat roof instead of having the metal roofing, it should be slanted more.
And they're gonna put like a peak on it, is that what you're saying?
No, they're gonna treat it now, so it's like a flat roof, so it has better-
With, with membrane?
It'll be, uh, decking underneath of it, which this does not have.
And how much is that gonna be?
You haven't gotten the estimates yet, have you?
No, they have fifty-three thousand one hundred on here as an emergency.
If you wanna talk about this one, this one shows that there's no decking underneath.
Yeah, I see that.
Oh, yeah.
But that's for both of them.
So once the metal's gone, you're gone.
Thirty grand is for this township project alone.
Thirty grand.
About a deck in there, any water that comes in goes right into the insulation.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty grand's not bad.
Yeah.
Makes the condensation more possible.
Is this part of the new system?
Roofing has gotten so expensive lately. Last ten years.
And that's steel roof, is it?
That's steel roof, right?
But what's the new one?
They're gonna be a lot of-
Vinyl.
Yeah, it'd be like a membrane.
Come and fix it.
Almost like a pool liner.
Yeah, hopefully they can fix that.
Um, I'm not sure what that information is at, I'd have to find out when they can get on it.
Who are you gonna contract with?
Jeff Rouse is the company that gave us the bid for it.
You've worked with him before, though?
Yes.
I know some of these, um, I'm gonna show them some of the previous patches. Um, this is a previous patch with tar, unfortunately.
It didn't work.
Not done well.
Cody has that.
I'm showing them one of the-
The warranty to come inside then also?
Yes, it has made-
Into the drywall and everything?
Yep.
This is caulk, is that?
That is just, uh, some of these that they have used self-tapping screws to caulk to cover a previous hole.
This is how it's easy.
So it'll just have a bunch of bandages over the years.
If you don't fix it soon, you're gonna get ants too.
Yeah.
Big time.
Right.
Do we have ants in the building?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's what draws them, is the moisture.
I mean, somebody throws food down in my office when we need.
Does he do that?
Um, I know not what. So this has been some previous patching with tar.
Yeah.
It's part of the problem there, that tar is covering, is where the steel overlaps each other.
Yeah, the flashing, it's hard to do unless you do it, when you put a new roof on to get it done right.
Uh, so that was a previous fix, that was not done well, unfortunately.
That looks like somebody's chewing gum.
Mm-hmm, it kinda does. And then the last photo we had was inside the building where the, um, furnace was, um, vented out.
Oh, yeah. That was a flashing, yeah?
Yeah, it's-
That's drywall damage there.
It's drywall damage inside the closet.
This is in that office?
Yes, in that back office.
And you're at thirty-five, or thirty right now, just for that repair, right?
Yeah.
What's the longevity of that vinyl roof?
I'm not sure.
Warranty?
We can ask.
Yeah.
I'd be curious. And is it, it's solid or s, like?
No, it's not solid. It's, it's like a, almost like a membrane, you know?
What keeps that from?
Like a giant tire patch is what it's like, kinda. Works well, actually.
You didn't know the warranty on it.
Yeah, it's got a, it's got a woven fabric inside of it and then it's integrated with, like, a polymer.
We can bring, we can bring back the longevity of it, um, and then when they can get to the work as well as the, the warranty, um, on that, if you can, if you're willing to make the decision tonight to move forward without the information. But we, we will bring that back to you for your consideration.
So you're asking for fifty-three thousand one hundred, thirty thousand for this and then-
For this township and then twenty grand for-
Fire.
Fire, which I'll show you now.
But you're not sure about that last number?
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is that there's also a leak at the fire department that will lead to the fix in addition to what we're showing you tonight.
Got it.
So the fifty-three will not be the total ask.
Got it.
We will be back with another ask.
But these are solid numbers for the projects you're showing us.
The two projects.
Okay, thank you.
I missed.
This is an outlet, metal steel outlet box in the radio room in the fire department.
Oh.
And the water's coming through the block walls and it has rusted the outlet.
Through the block wall?
Oh, that's not good. Water's going into an outlet. Oh, crap.
It's a problem.
I'm always amazed when you get water coming through concrete walls, that you get that calcium grow and that white, you know?
Yeah.
It's nasty.
And water pouring my fuse box.
This is a windowsill, is that correct?
I did too.
Yes, it is a windowsill inside the radio room where the water's been coming through. And you can see in there, there's a bunch of little white bubbles in it, that's insulation that they put inside the block and the water's pushing it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll ask me.
We have noticed it, came to our attention in the last few months, I think three months ago.
So jolly.
Two months ago.
The white stuff insulation, huh?
So Cody, in here it says to replace a total of ten windows on the south side of the building. How many other windows do we have in the fire department? I mean, is this gonna be a start to replace those windows, the first ten, and then in the future we should replace?
I believe that is replacing the rest of the windows that are in the office area, cause we have previously had the chief's windows replaced.
So all the windows will have been replaced since the fire station went up in two thousand?
All the windows in the office area. We have two more windows, bigger windows out in the Bay area, but those aren't included in this.
Do you wanna explain this one as an option?
That is another spot where water's coming into one of the office, offices there and it's chipping it apart.
Created that hole?
Yes.
Water created that hole.
That's this cement wall?
That's a vertical wall.
Yeah, so it's a block wall coming-
Block wall. And this is because the roof needs to be repaired?
No, this is all because the mortar on the outside of the block is breaking down over the years, chipping apart, it needs to be-
Disintegrating.
The basement area roof needs to be done again.
I had a builder tell me that was supposed to be covered with a sealant when it was built.
Yes, normally they do cover it with a water sealant.
So somebody screwed up when it was built, it sounded like-
Well, not necessarily, it's twenty-five years old.
Well, but there, but there was no original ceiling on it, that's what I was told by somebody that knew more than I did.
This is what's happening on the outside where the water's able to infiltrate inside.
Oh, I-
I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's what-
Did you go over and look at all that?
I heard two, three years ago.
Yeah.
It was, he was amazed.
Yeah, it just separates.
This was a problem, but it wasn't built right.
Yeah. That's when your roof was hollow.
Yeah.
Guess he was right.
Yeah.
And cracks, of course, where the water can-
I know, we've had similar building a couple times.
He said all the construction was, it was supposed to hold, be sealed, and he said it wasn't.
Cracks in the main screen.
Is that a point where we wanna make a, an amount up to X, you know, or something of that nature?
I think they've got the quotes, right, that these numbers are coming from-
At least these two, yes.
But I mean, the third one's gonna come back to us with, once they get numbers.
Oh, so we can just do a different one?
I mean, the argument, could it be worse when they get start?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, but we would most likely come back to you in two seconds on it.
I mean, you know, you, you're repairing a vertical crack in a cement wall and you find out the foundation's bad, so.
Why do you put that stuff out there for the-
Hopefully we're getting that before we find out the foundation.
Been there, done that, sorry.
Hopefully they're catching it.
All right, other questions? So you're looking for a motion to approve emergency funds of fifty-three thousand one hundred for these two projects?
Correct.
As a budget amendment.
As a budget amendment.
Oh, this is a formal budget amendment, okay.
I'll make that motion.
This will be in, thank you.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. This will be in the building and grounds? Is that the department?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Can she make that motion? She's in this building, so maybe that's a conflict.
Nope.
I don't know, wanting a roof over your head, I don't know if it's a conflict. Uh, other questions about the project?
Are you gonna bring the roof back at the next meeting?
Well, as soon as we have numbers, um, Cody, um, may not join us for that, but I will be able to handle that now that you've been exposed to what's occurring in the buildings.
Didn't we do that about ten years ago on that roof over there?
Um, I-
It has some previous work.
Yeah, we spent some money about ten years ago.
Yes.
And it, their guarantee isn't good or, um, is it run out or what?
I am not sure what all, I would have talked about and what exactly was done at that time, I just remember-
Cause I know we put quite a bit of money on that roof.
If, if, I can assure you that if this is warranty work under previous work, we will push for that. We will push really hard for that, not to have to expend these dollars, especially with other things failing. Um, but if it, if it has to be paid for outside of what work was done previously, we will have to move forward with that.
And it doesn't fall under insurance?
Um, I could talk to our liability about a claim, but I would be hesitant to do that. I mean, the building is twenty-five years old at this point, um, and I could talk to him about what would be realistic, um, but I would hesitate. I, I can pursue that. I'm, I'm not saying I won't pursue that, I'll say I would pursue that, but I would be cautious about making a claim, but I would do that with counsel of our liability insurer.
Okay. Uh, this sounds like a roll call vote to me, eh? So we have a motion in a second, we're gonna go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passed. That brings us to item fourteen, large B, small B, resolution twenty-two-five-oh-six, establishing authorized signatories for MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals.
Uh, so in, um, my absence, uh, the last time in going to, um, Arizona, the clerk discovered that I am the only, um, authorized signatory on our MERS plan and that it would indeed be helpful for there to be another, uh, signer, um, for the work that's done by this township board and it should not have to wait for me in my absence or, uh, it should not wait for her in her absence. So what we are, have before you tonight is an, uh, uh, an approval to add the clerk as another authorized signatory for MERS contracts and service credit, so I am not the only one that's signing documents on behalf of the township. I think it's a smart thing to do and it will cover you well for the future. Sorry. It's okay.
Definitely.
Is there a world in which we would need a third person?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, but we could add the treasurer if you would like to do that, or the, or the supervisor.
I'm just, if we're gonna do it once, maybe we-
Add a third.
I see there's three lines, so-
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt, I think, to add another person.
Um, traditionally, the three of us sign, um, roam contracts, um, and other, uh, business you would sign as well, so we could add, it's, it's really up to you how you would like to add a third person, but the treasurer would make, uh, we're the ones that traditionally deal with MERS changes.
Okay, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's fine, whatever.
Brenda?
Yeah, fine with it, yeah.
I'd propose that we would add the treasurer then to-
Thank you.
Can I make a motion then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always.
I would like to make the motion to approve this, uh, additional signatories for the MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals to include, uh, Brenda Challander, township clerk, and, what was your name again?
We're just at Jennifer Wilson.
Jennifer Wilson, the treasurer.
We're just gonna say clerk and treasurer.
Oh, 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 just, okay, so it-
Just positions.[1537.12] Just positions.
Just the positions.
We just wanted to make sure we, you know.
So what I heard you say is you were making a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment that we made tonight?
Yes.
With the additional signatories, yes.
Great. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Was it Al?
I say Al.
Okay.
It was in staring.
I'm like, who's fast?
It was, it was the same time.
Exactly.
All right, so we have a motion in a second, is there other discussion for this? All right, this feels like a roll call vote, okay.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passed. Uh, that brings us to our last couple of items for the night. A closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion with the township attorney regarding, regarding a FOIA denial appeal from Marionfeld Law, P L L C. And we're looking to action to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion to enter into closed session.
One second.
A motion in a second. Thank you, we'll do another roll call.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yep.
Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I would recommend that you bring water and mints with you.
Is he going to talk a long time?
He may talk a long time. There's some extra waters here if you need more.
Do we have like canned foods and?
I should have brought snacks.
That should be in the strategic plan.
Snacks for everyone? Yeah, it is. We probably need more chairs.
That doesn't sound right.
The material that the mold is made out of, you put it in water for like 24 hours and it frickin grows. And then you cast that one, if you want it bigger than it grows again.
Proportional.
It goes three times the size. I was thinking about making one.
You know, we've kinda, our subcommittee, our fundraising subcommittee has kinda started that discussion, but we've never gotten to consensus on it.
That's just my idea.
And also, we've yet to get any real mega donations. There's that as well.
That's, that's a big problem.
Yeah.
Everybody thinks you're doing a great job, except I'm not really working to do any money out.
Yeah. I mean, we're up to probably about forty, forty-five thousand dollars over the last year, but we just got a bunch because of the reunion.
Only just 20 more years to go.
Well, if the state could read their grants.
Oh, speaking of that, before the meeting starts, that guy that was, Larry Merrill, is that his name?
Yes.
He was on, he's a big wig at the Michigan Historical Museum.
Yeah.
Might, might ask him for some, some.
I like that you think docent is a big wig. Straight to you. He gives free tours to people, but he's the one to go to.
But you know, I just try to give him all the credit.
He definitely deserves credit. I just, I like your, you have high thoughts about people.
When I say big wig, I just mean that he is more knowledge than we do.
That's true. Karen, are we back live?
Ah, we are.
Great. So I'm gonna recall this meeting back to order. We are now on item 14, new business. B, items for action. We've done C, and now we have D. Is there any action from closed session that the board would like to do?
Um, I move to adopt the recommendation of the township attorney regarding a response to the FOIA appeal correspondence submitted by Marionfeld Law, and to authorize the township supervisor to sign the response to Mr. Marionfeld on behalf of the township board.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Do you wanna do a roll call?
Yep. Mr. Kotke?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosegrance?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to the end of our business tonight. Let's ask our superintendent to briefly, since she's feeling a little hoarse, give us her report, please.
She's done all the talking tonight.
I appreciate that. I think I do this about once a year. So I was asked to provide an update on the sidewalk work that is occurring in the Webster Road area. As many of you travel through this area know, they are removing old sidewalk and they are preparing for walls to be poured across the street for the new sidewalk that will be in our community. As you have seen too, Mr. Kessler is also preparing his property for sidewalks as well. The roads will remain open as long as they are working on sidewalks. You will encounter interruptions in being able to drive through, straight through. So they're allowing for traffic to flow in both directions. So you can expect some delays as work continues. I encountered one on the way to work this morning. I had to wait, I think, 30 seconds to be able to pull into the township driveway. Please, 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 please plan ahead and please be patient with the people that are in the roadway area. They are working very hard to, for the betterment of our community and they deserve a safe workspace. The roads will be, of course, open through Memorial Day so that the parade can take place. The Clinton County Road Commision, excuse me, is working very closely with township staff to make sure when the days do come that the township campus is closed from Webster Road, that they will, people will have access to the fire department on Drumheller Road and will be able to access our campus. That way, we are obtaining signs from their road sign shop to direct traffic in a safe way. And that just is going to rely on people not using the police department driveway and other areas where emergency vehicles will need to be unobstructed, which is behind the fire department, as they come up to the senior center or to conduct business at the township or the police department. So we just ask that people try to follow those signs and do the best they can. People will be available to help direct traffic during those times. One of those times being in August when there is an election, in fact, for the Bath Schools. So there is a lot occurring this summer with cemeteries, parades and whatnot, and the new, the new Bath Fest. But we are trying to accommodate all those things in a safe manner for our seniors and for the people that are accessing this campus to vote and do other things, pay taxes and whatnot. So please be patient with us and please plan ahead. I'm sure our phones will ring a lot because people wanna know if things are open and we'd be happy to help you make your way in a safe way up to here. We are hoping that people will not try to utilize cemetery roads and other means of accessing this campus that might not be safe for both the infrastructure in the cemetery as well as people that are trying to work. So please do not take shortcuts. Please follow the, the road, the road directions that are provided on both our website and Facebook. And, and just let those people have a safe work day and go home to their families at each and every day. If I can address anything for you here tonight, I would be happy to do that. There have been a lot of moving pieces going on in the township with our buildings and our people. A couple of our people had surgery last week and are currently without their appendices. One of them, one of them being our interim fire chief, who is back to work now and at the helm once again. So we wish them continued health, but there is a lot going on with staff. Our summer staff will be joining us very soon to help us with cemeteries and mowing and things of that nature. So we rely on a lot of different people to make this township function and we appreciate each and every one of them and the contribution they make to our buildings and infrastructure. So we appreciate everyone. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
I heard from some folks that the sidewalk work had stopped and that their particular.
Driveway.
Yeah, driveway was not as accessible as they had hoped. And they were told that it was going to be a short turnaround and it's been a longer turnaround.
Oh. They, those people can contact the township offices, six four one six seven two eight. We may refer them to the Clinton County Road Commission, but we are all making sure that work is of quality to the people that have the driveway and then any work that's being done so that it's not left in a, in a dis, in a state of disrepair. So.
But the work hasn't stopped, right?
No, the work has not stopped.
There seems to be a belief that the work has stopped for some reason.
No, that is not correct. That is not correct.
I know there was an issue. Yeah, they're out there every day.
Yeah.
I know there was an issue like at the.
Slate Road.
Um, Slate Road and the subdivision.
Oh, you're talking.
Cause there's a utility pole or a street light or something that has to be moved by Consumers Energy before they can finish laying some cement. So I don't know. That's part of an issue. I do know that that has to happen.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody with questions or, or operating under any other information that's different than what we're saying to call us and have a conversation with us. We, we do have as well, people that can go out on site and look at what they're dealing with and help them through that as well.
There was one complaint also on that, I think it was on that same note about some homeowner, one of the workers suggested they just throw down a couple pieces of plywood because they were having problems.
I, I am aware of that situation and I can assure you that I had no less than three staff people.
I figured that.
That were on site to help those homeowners. And sometimes homeowners just do not wanna be cooperative. But I, I have sent the interim fire chief because he was previously the DPW director. I've sent the now interim DPW director and I've sent the planner. We'll make house calls to help people.
Excellent, yeah.
Where they should park and how they should access their home or whatever they're trying to access. We, we are out there in the community and helping everybody that we can navigate these difficult times and how they can get to what they wanna do.
Unfortunately, social media, you know, whether it's true or not.
Yeah.
Way inflated.
It does. But we.
We're doing our best, people.
We have a great partner in the, in the contractor and in the Clinton County Road Commission who answer emails all day and night about how they can help us continue to conduct business, whether it's elections or, or what it is. And they're, and they're dedicated to doing that. So we appreciate them very much.
Mark and Doug do a great job.
They do. That whole team does a great job.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
Laboring through that difficulty.
Thank you.
For the cemetery, can we just close those roads off?
Uh, we most likely will not. Those roads are being accessed as well for.
Maybe we can put a sign out there.
Cemetery, but.
Drive-through or.
Yeah.
We just have to monitor them. We can monitor them.
Yeah.
I mean, we have DPW that's out in the area all day long and they'll, they'll help people as well. As long as people will slow down and listen and have a conversation.
Yeah.
We'll get through it. We will.
Yeah, cause you can't close your cemetery roads for people that actually come in and use the cemetery.
Well, you could. You just choose not to.
Well.
It's the time of the year they all plant flowers and stuff.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, this is.
We put flags.
This is the time of the year.
Yeah.
They did the flags.
Memorial weekend. My mom used to drag me to all of our relatives that I never met because they were dead 30 years before I died or was born. You were a good boy, Ray. I was the only boy, so that's why. All right. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to public statement two. It appears I have again scared off our public.
He wants to speak.
Oh, wearing a different hat. Matt's public. He needs a haircut.
Matt Martin, Police, Chief of Police. I just wanna give a quick update. I know that we've been here a while, so I'll be brief. When we're gonna start a hiring process within our department, when former chief Gary Smith retired last November, we've been down two officers and that's put quite the burden on officers working next door. I'm excited about moving forward with the hiring process. We will probably close that in two weeks and, and hold our interviews shortly, our first round of interviews. We have some, some potential candidates that I'm excited about, but I certainly would love to see a larger. to see a larger candidate pool. So if anybody listening, I just want them to know that Bath Township is a great community. It's a great community to work in and I believe that our department is excellent and will provide a place for anybody to grow and have a successful and fulfilling career. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item 17, board member comments. I asked you all to hold your comments from the last session, so feel free to bring them back. Kate, do you want to get us started?
Sure. I was at the candlelight vigil for the Bath School Museum to honor the Bath disaster last night at the James Cousins Park and had a chance to test out the new sidewalk through the park. It was great. I'm just, I can't, I know I've said it like the last two or three meetings, but I'm just so pleased with how nice these sidewalks and curbs look going through our community. I think it just gives such a much more finished, polished, modern look to the areas where we've been able to put them in. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find a way to keep this momentum going in the future. And I'm excited that people will be able to use them for Bath Fest, to get from one event to the other. So it was really great. So thanks again to everybody who helped make that happen for our community. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Brenda?
I don't have anything.
I attended the graduation ceremony for Bath High School yesterday. I saw Kate there repping the museum committee. It's the first time I've gone to graduation for the high school because I have a graduating high schooler, but it was a very nice ceremony. It was nice to see the community turnout and see a sense of community and lots of positivity there. So hopefully a lot of those folks are going to college and going to find the next steps of their life and maybe come back to Bath, be taxpayers here again.
I just want to say I'm glad we're finally starting a strategic plan, so I'm glad we approved Mr. Merrill's contract.
All right.
I second that. I think the strategic plan is very important. And one thing also I'd like to plead is we have these beautiful 97-inch LGTVs and we seem to have a problem, no matter who tries to use them, they don't seem to want to work and they're, I swear they're state of the art. So I would suggest that we get some, somebody training so any one of us could hit that button to put something up there. Maybe we should just buy a MacBook Pro to set right over there. We'd never have a problem. But anyway, I think that's important. We got, you know, there's close to 20 grand sitting on that table, on that wall. So anyway, that's just a problem that I've had for quite some time. With that, I'll close my mouth.
Thanks, Ray.
I second that. It's a shame that we have this and we can't use it because it's too complex, but, and I'm glad we have a strategic plan so we can prioritize things, it looks like. Really makes me happy that we can do that.
Thanks, Ray. All right. Seeing no business, anyone want to adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn until our next meeting on June 2nd. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, team.
That card will be your graduation next year.
I know. I watched it through YouTube. I've gone through two.
Trent. I kept it because I want to read it.
Oh, the band concert.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah. We didn't really have enough time to read it.